Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and begin our board meeting. It is 5:30 on Thursday, January 11th. And I would like to introduce the board to you. In attendance tonight, we have Dale Hansen, Business Administrator; Terry Rhodes, Board Member; Jeff Nielsen, Board Member; Alan Groenig is excused; I'm Kathy Chris-Janson, Board Member; Roger Pulsifer, Board Member; Steve Norton, Superintendent; Randall Bagley, Board Member; and Larry Jepson, Board Member, is also excused. We will begin with the pledge and the mission statement, which will be given by Randall Bagley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you. We are really excited and happy to have some Lincoln Elementary School students here who are going to be spotlighted and present their bell choir. Their principal is Jenny Boust, and their director is Roseanne Porter. And so we'll go ahead and turn the time over to you, Mrs. Porter. Thank you so much. Did you get all the pictures? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Lincoln Elementary. We're just so happy that you came and shared your talents with us tonight. Okay. We're going to go ahead and enjoy some other recognitions for the Utah High School Athletic Association All-State Honorees. And we will go ahead and begin with Green Canyon. Is there anyone here to present the certificates? All right.
Let's go on and do Skyview.
Okay. Let's do Mountain Crest next, then.
Yeah. I think we've got parents out in the hallway right now.
Oh, okay.
Come on up. Put on a big smile and just look out there at that crowd.
Principal Terry Cutler will present the certificates, awards.
Thanks, everybody. I'm honored to be here tonight to present to you our first trimester academic all-state nominees. And I do want to impress upon you how impressive these young people are. And I want to tell you just a little bit about them, and I'll make it quick. Okay? So Anna, give us a wave, so everyone knows who you are. Anna's parents are Danny and Amy. Anna has a cumulative GPA of 4.0. This trimester, she's taking five college-level classes. She plans to work this summer in Jackson Hole as a river guide. And Anna will likely go to college for a semester before leaving on an LDS mission. She is currently deciding between SUU and USU and wants to major in pre-med. We're so proud of her. Kenna? Kenna? Give us a little wave. Kenna wasn't feeling good the other day, so she's looking pretty spry today. Kenna Camery is the daughter of Joseph and Camille. Her cumulative GPA is a 4.0. You're going to find that with most of these kids. Currently taking two AP classes. Kenna is excitedly awaiting her acceptance letter to BYU, where she hopes to major in art and eventually get admitted to BYU's very prestigious animation program. Ryan. Ryan Kirby is the son of Chris and Mary. His cumulative GPA, again, 4.0. Currently taking three AP classes. Ryan is planning on serving an LDS mission and then attending USU, where he wants to major in engineering. Jared. Just a little taller than me. Jared is the son of Stephen and Bonnie. His cumulative GPA, 4.0. Currently taking three college-level classes. He's planning on serving an LDS mission after graduation, hopefully Spanish-speaking, then attending USU, where he plans to get his degree in civil engineering. He then wants to get a master's degree at BYU in civil engineering. Besides running cross-country, Jared plays tennis, competes on the Vex Robotics Team, and participates in Spanish Club. Samantha. Samantha Osborne is the daughter of Sean and Wendy. Cumulative GPA of a 4.0. Currently taking two college-level classes. After high school, Sammy hopes to attend BYU, where she'll major in elementary education. Sammy has a beautiful smile and is sure to make everyone laugh. She entertains us in the office. We love her. And we also have Whitney. Whitney Stanko is the daughter of Brian and Tara. Her cumulative GPA is a 4.0. She's currently taking three college-level classes. She plans to work a couple of jobs this summer and then go to college at USU or Dixie. She is planning on going into nursing. Not with us tonight is Dylan Bostock. And Dylan is the son of John and Natalie. His cumulative GPA is a 4.0. Currently taking three college-level classes. After high school, Dylan plans to serve an LDS mission, then go to college at either Utah or USU. He wants to study something in the medical field. And I should mention, Ryan is being recognized for cross-country. Samantha, volleyball. Anna is cross-country? No? Yes? Tennis. Tennis. Whitney, soccer. And Kenna, cross-country. And Dylan is being recognized for football. So I give to you Mountain Crest All-State Academic nominations. So could you guys squeeze together a little bit, so we can get a picture? I'm good. And you guys, we have a little... School Board has a certificate for you. So proud of you guys.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mountain Crest students. Excuse me. We'll now recognize our Skyview students, and Principal Mike Monson will do the recognitions.
Okay. We have two here tonight, and I am a slug. I didn't... I don't have all this really great information. Brig Adams is our All-State, Academic All-State in Football. And let me just preface this a little bit to... To make Academic All-State, you have to be a senior. And then when the nominations come out, I can't... I don't think there's any sports that you don't have to have a 4.0 to be named Academic All-State. And when I look at the list of the four high schools here, Cache Valley is way over the top representing the state. I mean, it's an incredible amount when you look at the Academic All-States from around the state, and it's really dominated by the four high schools here. So I think we all should be very proud of our students. And so I'll recognize Brig Adams, who is our Academic All-State in Football this year. Again, you look at students that are excelling on the field, and I know Brig is involved in our student leadership and also involved in football and academics and, you know, just a great young man. And so we appreciate him very much. And so Brig Adams. And Cassandra DeBose is also involved in our leadership, outstanding, you know, great young woman. And she's going to go play volleyball at Utah State as well. And man, oh, man, she was fun to watch. She taught me what a pancake was. I know it's when you dive on the floor and put your hand out and still pops a ball out, and I saw her do it a lot of times. And so that was my education this year of volleyball, my new vocabulary. And so, anyway, I just appreciate both these students so much, and so I present Cassandra DeBose. Yeah, we arranged it this way, hoping you guys know. I will mention our other Academic All-State. We had Reed Newey in cross-country; McKenna Carlson and Kelsey Defendall in cross-country as well; and Hannah Davis and Rose Godfrey in the girls' tennis; and also Haley Goody in cross-country. So great representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Skyview. Congratulations.
If there's not anybody here from... There's not anybody here from Green Canyon, I'd be happy to... They're all former Box Canyon. Is there a Green Canyon... Those of you with Green Canyon, come on up. Let's recognize you. Oh, we didn't... Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll go ahead, then, and have Rich Line present their students. Principal Hanky.
All right. Well, it looks like we just have four here. We had 10 Academic All-State recipients in the fall season from four different sports. And I don't have all of their details. I'd like to ask them if they would just share their name and what sport that they participated in. I can tell you, like Mike mentioned, they're all 4.0s. If they're not, would you raise your hand? No, don't do that. I'm pretty sure they're all 4.0s. It's pretty amazing, the quality of these kids, their participation in not just the sports, but also in school leadership. And we have our school president here, dressed in her sweater. And so... And then, of course, academics keeping those up. So pretty impressive. But if you'll say your name and which sport, say it nice and clear and slowly.
Luke Anderson, cross-country.
Lindsay Rigby, also cross-country.
Kristen Johnson for tennis.
A Taylor, cross-country.
All right. And then others that we had from cross-country, Logan Yasi, is that how you say it right? Yep. Make sure I say that right. And Madison Budge from girls' soccer. And Sage Obrey, girls' soccer. Naomi Nielsen, girls' soccer. Ivy Seholzer, girls' cross-country. And Natalie Smith, girls' cross-country. So we're proud of them and congratulate all of you for your success. And will you... Let's have... I'd like to have your parents stand, if you would, just quickly, the parents of these kids. Let's recognize them as well. All right. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations, and thank you, Rich Line. We would love to have you stay, but those of you who would prefer to leave, now's a really good time to escape. Okay. We'll go ahead if there is any public input. Okay. No public input, so we will go ahead and move on to our action agenda and turn the time over to our Business Administrator Dale Hansen for our surplus property.
The request that we have is to name this facility here, which is a 6,241-square building, along with 1.84 acres, which is actually on the south end of this building. Still nothing?
Kick it up a bit, Mike.
Anyway, the property, then, the line would be actually on the south. Well, it's this grass area sidewalk that's on the east side of the building, all of that south, including parking that would be on this other side towards the North Logan Fire Department, and then running west back to the end of the property. We were requesting to actually name the property as surplus, and then at a later point, we'll actually be able to discuss with the board in trying to look at the construct of how we would put this together, putting that up for sale. But actually looking in the USBA bulletin about when an executive session can be held, the board actually needs to name the property as surplus prior to actually having a closed session to discuss pricing and logistics and all of that. So that would be the request tonight, is to actually name that property as surplus.
Okay. Does anyone have questions up to this point? All right. I will take a motion, then, to declare the property that Dale has described as surplus property.
I move that we declare the Professional Development and Training Center Building and Adjacent Property as surplus.
I second it.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that this property be declared surplus property. Any discussion? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote.
Okay. All the votes are in, and Adams in favor of the motion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our report agenda, then, and we have David Watkins here to inform us about the Sharp Survey results from Bear River Health Department.
You're going to want to pull that mic all the way... This one, all the way up, and kind of lean into it.
This won't work.
It'll work if you get close enough. Yeah, you can pull it out if you want.
So I had a presentation as our way to play that. Or do you all have it in front of you?
Yeah, I've got it.
You have it in front of us? Okay. Well, I can't see it, but I can wing it. Is it on the computer back here? Or... Okay. That's all right. I will talk about it, then, and we'll go through it, and you all can kind of see the data there as we go through it. Usually Alan's here, and I can kind of razz him a little bit, but he's not here today, so I won't be able to do that. First off, I want to thank you all for your support and for the district's support in helping us get the Sharp Survey administered in the schools and the data to us and for sharing that data with us. That data is really vital to everything we do in prevention at the Health Department. If we didn't have that data, it would be really hard for us to get the information that we need to write for grants, both at the state level and the federal level, and that's where our funding comes from. And so without that, we wouldn't be able to do prevention in Cache Valley. And so the data from all of our school districts combined together helps us be able to write for those grants and to get that funding. And so thank you for helping us get that data. Kind of the first slides there are just your demographics for the school district. I like to share those. One, it helps us identify if the administration of that survey is going the way that we would like it to go. If the demographics don't line up with the demographics of the school district, and we just ask the question, why? And then maybe make those align better. I believe that Cache County surveys all their students, though, so it should line up, both ethnicity-wise and grade-wise as well. From there, I believe the next set of slides are the substance abuse indicators. As you look at those indicators, I want to highlight that the orange dot on your screens there is the state average, and then the black dot is the BRHD average. So Rich, Cash, Logan, Box Elder, all combined together. And what this data is really telling us is that students within our Health District and within Cache School District are making really good, really smart, really wise decisions. When you think about our substance use rates, they're below the state average. Utah traditionally has some of the lowest in the nation. Cache County is well below that. We do have some concerns, though most of those substances are declining, but we are monitoring marijuana closely as climate changes within the state and within surrounding states, as perception continues to change around marijuana. We're monitoring what's going to happen there. And then e-cigarettes, you saw, had a decrease this past year that had been increasing up until this past year in Cache County. We're monitoring that really closely as well. Marijuana and e-cigarettes are the two substances youth tend to think aren't very harmful. When youth don't think using a substance is very harmful, they're more likely to use those substances. When it comes to parental disapproval, we know parents are the number-one reason kids don't use a substance. And so you'll see your next set of slides are those perception of harm. Teens, again, most teens, about 95 or above, think alcohol, cigarettes, prescription... Misusing prescription drugs is harmful, but they don't think marijuana and e-cigarettes are at the same rate. And then when you look at parental disapproval, again, most teens, almost 99% of teens, think that their parents will disapprove of them using alcohol or cigarettes or prescription drugs. But when it comes to marijuana and e-cigarettes, that perception, again, is low, around 95%. So not a significant difference there, but it is that their notion that more teens do think that their parents even will disapprove of those lasts as well. Why does that matter? The next slide shows that parental disapproval is the, again, the number-one reason kids don't use. When alcohol, when parents perceive that their... When youth perceive that their parents think alcohol use is very wrong, alcohol use is almost nonexistent. But when that perception even drops to just being wrong, 30-day use, which is regular use, jumps about sevenfold. And then, again, if it becomes just a little bit wrong, that jumps even more. That parental disapproval is important, and anytime we can help parents understand that they need to get the message across, alcohol use or drug use in general is very wrong for them underage, that'll help reduce substance use rates. So what do we do at the Health Department? We said this data is vital to us for helping us do prevention. What do we do for prevention? The next slide, terrible slide, I know, you probably can't read it, but it's the... All the risk factors, not all of them, but some of the risk factors, and then some of the problem behaviors that might be seen in a school district or in a community. When we address risk factors, the things across the top there, they not only affect substance use, but they also affect things like delinquency, ting pregnancy, anxiety, and depression. And so that's what we try to focus on, is we try to focus on addressing those risk factors, or on the flip side, addressing protective factors. If we can raise protection or lower risk, then the likelihood of a youth participating in those problem behaviors that we might see is decreased. And so that's how we try to spend our time at the Health Department. That's when we write grants, is we try to identify what key risk factors, what key protective factors can we reduce or increase. The Sharp Survey doesn't just talk about substance misuse. That's what I like to focus on a lot, but mental health is tied indirectly with substance misuse. And you can see the next set of slides are your mental health indicators. And by and large, our substance misuse rates are extremely good, and they're all decreasing, for the most part. But when we look at our mental health indicators, these are still below the nation or state average, but they are increasing. So within Cache County School District, you can see how a lot of those mental health indicators have increased over the last four years of the survey. And that's concerning to us. And that's a trend that we see with all of our school districts and that we've seen within our Health District, is those indicators increasing. Oftentimes, these are more serious than substance misuse, right? We're concerned when youth start using substances, but oftentimes, there's a lot of treatment associated with that that we can get them into if they have started. Mental health, one of the indicators is... Has attempted or has planned suicide. That's a final decision that that youth is making. And so with those increasing and more and more youth potentially thinking along that line, oftentimes, it's if we don't have the prevention upfront, it's too late to get them the help that they need, if that's kind of where their line of thinking is. And so we need to monitor that and be aware that our mental health indicators are increasing, and we may need to do more preventive services upfront to help them get the help that they need before it becomes a mental health crisis for them. need before it becomes a mental health crisis for them. What do we do for mental health indicators? Oh, there's some other slides on there. So there's the why kids have felt sad or hope, or who they've talked to when they felt sad or hopeless. And you can see the majority of teens, when they feel sad or hopeless, don't talk to anybody. I think that's concerning. That's concerning to me as a parent, that's probably concerning to you all as educators, is why aren't teens, when they're feeling sad or hopeless, talking to somebody about that? And there's, for whatever reason, a social stigma or whatever, that they can't talk to somebody. You know, what can we do to help students, one, talk to their parents, which is the number-one person that they will talk to, but how can we also increase the likelihood that they'll talk to a teacher at school or talk to the counselor at the school and kind of not have that stigma associated with that? And then there's also the slide that shows the reasons for bullying. Again, the majority of teens don't know why they're being bullied. And I don't, I've gone back and forth, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I don't think it's ever good that a teen's bullied, but would it be better if they knew why? And none of those reasons, if you see those reasons for why a teen is bullied, none of those are valid reasons. They're never a valid reason, right, for bullying? And so, you know, how can we help teens feel safe at school and feel like that they don't have to come into a situation where they're being bullied, particularly in a situation where maybe they don't know why they're being bullied? But the same things we do to address substance abuse are the same things that we do to address mental health, right? So if we can focus again on risk factors associated, particularly to the mental health, the depression, the anxiety, help teens feel safe at school, help teens feel connected to school, help teens feel that they have opportunities. As I've done these presentations, it's been awesome to see that there's been youth doing presentations at the first of this. We have the bell choir here, and there was, Logan had some other things, and then the recognition of the athletes. That's awesome, that youth have that opportunity to be recognized pros socially and have those opportunities. Those are protective factors. This goes into the social development strategy. Teens have opportunities to participate in something, connect to an adult, connect to a school, connect to a community, and then rewarded for that. But how can we greater get youth who won't just naturally participate in after-school activities, who aren't athletic, who maybe don't want to sing in the choir, or just aren't naturally outgoing? How do we get them the opportunity? You can see our protective factors on the next few slides are all relatively high. So most teens have protection. Most teens feel like they have that opportunity. How do we hit the ones that don't? How do we help them be at a school board, excuse me, at a school board meeting, recognized for the contributions they're making to a school, or recognized in front of the school? And so you can see the risk and protective factors there. Again, most of those are really good. We want risk to be decreasing and below the state average. We want protection above the state average and increasing. And for the most part, those are what we see there. The one that sticks out to me for Cache County is that low commitment to school. And there was quite a significant jump between the 2015 survey and the 2017 survey. How, you know, what does that mean? How can we help kids feel connected to school? How can we help them feel that what they're learning in school is beneficial to them moving forward in their, in their lives, and feel like they, you know, that they're not, they need to be at school, and they can't just miss classes and those type of things? So there's already lots of awesome things going on, and we, again, appreciate the support of Cache County School District, the schools, the principals. They are all awesome in helping us get into the schools and do those things. There's some amazing things going on in the community. And really why I'm here today is, one, to get that information out, to share that with you, and then, two, we have coalitions. How we address a lot of these risk factors is through community coalitions. We have a coalition in Cache County called NUSAP, the Northern Utah Substance Abuse Prevention Team. We need to grow support for that coalition. If we can have support of school boards, school districts, principals on that coalition, it can help us better partner in ways that we can help address low commitment to school. I'm not, as a prevention specialist, going to be able to help kids feel connected to their school. That's going to be an individual school process. And so if we can help grow support for that coalition, we can better address those risk and protective factors in the community. And then, two, we hope that each individual school, the school district has the ability to have each individual school that has sixth, eighth, 10th or 12th grade in it have their report. And so we would like to, or could potentially meet with every single school that has results from this and work with them to come up with even just simple plans. It might be as simple as having teachers stand outside their doors during breaks to connect with the kids as they're walking in between classes. But we would like to sit down with schools and go through their data and help them come up with a plan. Really, that's where we need to go with this. We see the survey as vital. We want the schools to see the survey as vital for them, too. We want them to utilize this data at their individual school. It makes sense for us to get the data, but you're the ones that administer the survey, get the data and own the data. Let's see if we can use it in the schools to really make a difference. That's where the biggest difference is going to be made. So thanks for your time today. Thanks for having me. I can answer any questions if you have any, if that's okay. If not, thank you.
Any questions?
Just a comment. I think that, well, I have a question and a comment. So Cherie Hansen at Cache High feels that the juvenile justice changes from last year have really affected kids' feelings about school. Do you perceive that to be the same thing, I mean, do you have the same opinion of that?
So I'm not going to talk specifically about House Bill 239, right, the changes that they made?
Uh-huh.
Just, I was just under school board yesterday, and they said the same thing. And so like my perception of has this affected youth comes from those in the school, and that's what I'm hearing, is that this has affected it. And I know some things in that, in that bill, if youth understood, like if they got a hold of that bill and like sat down and understood it, it would probably change the whole landscape of how, you know, truancy and substance use and all of that.
Right.
So, I mean, potentially, I would agree with that, I guess is what I'm saying. It's like, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay. And what I'm hearing from counselors at individual schools, because you said that you'd like to sit down with individual schools, what I'm hearing from counselors at schools is because the data is aggregate, it's not as helpful to them, because there are not a lot of kids in each of those schools who have these types of issues. It's better for them to find out specifically who those students are, so they can focus on helping those individual students in, in personal ways. The aggregate data is nice to see trends over time for them, but without individual data, it's not as helpful.
Yeah, no, that actually makes a lot, I've never heard that before, but that makes a lot of sense. Where we don't have very high use rates, we can probably, people in the school can pinpoint, right, who might be the problem. I would say that the aggregate, it's still important, when we look at the risk and protective factors, there's still opportunity to increase protection and increase risk. And it's, and the importance of that is addressing the problems before it's even known that it's going to be a problem. And so if we can raise protection or lower risk, there's going to be even less students that present themselves as having problems. And so I agree that schools should focus on the individuals, but let's also maybe explore ways that we can address some of those risk and protective factors in a way to reduce that even more, because that is possible to do as well.
So they do look at the aggregate. I mean, they do look at the survey and say, oh, this trend is a little bit up, this trend's down, whatever, over time. And so they, in my opinion, they are applying that as well as they can, based on the trends over time, because that's what the survey gives to them. And so they are talking, they do talk about it briefly when they get the results, but it's the individuals that they're mostly concerned about.
Good. That's awesome to hear. I don't, I don't hear always what's going on in the school, so that's good to hear.
I have a comment. As I've listened to the counselors, it really takes quite a bit of their time to do this survey, and so sometimes they're not feeling, like as Terry mentioned, that it really is worth the time. But I am wondering if it would be helpful to you and to them if you were able to meet with the counselors when they have some of their meetings and give them the information that you have given us, so they kind of see how it is helpful? I don't know if that would work or not, but that's just a thought that rolled through my head.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the reason why we got this idea, maybe where it might be beneficial to go to each individual school and have a sit-down meeting, is because that's the kind of the feeling that we do get a lot, is, you know, it takes a lot of time to do this, and I'm sure there was some logistical things, or there will be with the next one with sixth graders now being in elementary school and not in the middle school or whatever it was before. So there are issues like that that we need to be aware of and that we can, we want to help with and do. And that's part of the reason why if schools aren't seeing the data as being as beneficial, you know, we would like to have those discussions, see why, see if there's ways that we can make it more beneficial to each individual school, to make it worth the time.
Okay. So would you do that?
Yeah, I would do that for sure.
And how would you do that? Would you contact schools or the counseling group or?
Yeah, so we have presented in the past at the counseling group. I would like to go to the schools and maybe meet with the counselors at the school, just individually, one-on-one, and so maybe it's just me reaching out to each one of those schools, and we can get that done.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we will go ahead now and hear a report on the Mountain Crest High School Student Clubs.
We have four clubs that we'd like to seek approval on. The first one is the Acapella Club, which is a club where some of our higher singers would just like to have extra time to get together and continue working on their singing skills. And then the second one is the Girls Lacrosse Club, where they just like to get together, practice, do some different things, in where down the road lacrosse is hoping to come. So, and then we have the Video Game Design Team, where they would like to get together to do more of the programming of games, instead of not playing games, just how does it all work, and kind of developing that side there. And then we have a South Korea Club, where they like to get together and just learn more about the South Korea culture.
Any questions?
I have several. So there's a parent and player contract for sportsmen listed in the expectations for the lacrosse club. Who will approve that contract?
So we will, as a school, approve that.
Okay.
So, and we've like threw them, they've met all of our requirements. They'll have instructor, a teacher with them at all times, whenever they're doing any of their activities, too, so.
And in the Acapella Club, I thought it was fun that they said there wouldn't be any money needed, because, quote, "We will find and print our own music," unquote. Any concerns about copyright infringements there?
Yes, so what they're hoping, I think, really to do is get with the choir teacher already, the guitar teacher, and kind of use what the school has, instead of printing their own. Yes, we left about that as well, so.
And my last question is, is Mr. Heaton new to Mountain Crest? Why is he the advisor for quite a few clubs?
The kids love him. He's full of energy, he'll do anything, so.
And he's willing to do it.
Awesome.
Well, here's what happens on the clubs. The kids go, it's part of the process, they go and find an advisor. And finding a tenant who's at South Cache, who's been pushing the Girls Lacrosse and trying to find, you know, a way to meet all the criteria to have Girls Lacrosse be recognized as a club, and Mr. Heaton's already doing Boys Lacrosse and agreed to do it. They really did not make it find someone who's willing to give that time to be the advisor of the club.
Cool. That's all of my questions.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Okay. We'll have Mike present the school fee schedule for the 2018-19 school year.
All right, I can get that one to work. That one won't work anymore. I do want to display the fees up as we talk about them here for just a minute. It's, it's always an adventure when we sit down and we talk about school fees. And I do want to begin the discussion on this, is I hope we get some feedback from the board tonight, so that if there's anything that we need to go back and talk about at the next secondary principals' meeting, we could do that and then be prepared for an approval during the next month. Let me go down through here, and anything that's in red is, is meaning it's a change. And so I'll walk you through each one of these. The very first one up under elementary, and I do appreciate Terry sending me some notes previously on a few questions that we could, that I could look into and clarify, because quite frankly, I don't, didn't even pay attention to elementary items there, but she brought one up. But the, she questioned the core remediation fee of $30. That's just been there for, that was set up probably eight or 10 years ago, but I did talk to Gary about it, and Gary says that's no longer used, and he suggested we just strike it. So it's struck in, in this proposal. If you keep going down now into the middle schools, seventh and eighth grade, the next one is where it says foreign language slash dual-language immersion. Now, the fee didn't change, but we just add a dual-language immersion, because that will be a foreign language, based depending on which school that DLI is going to, and we're just putting in place, next year it begins at North Cache with one of the classes, and so we're just simply putting that in place where it's a foreign language, but we were being specific with DLI with that. The theater is struck, because as we converted from six-sevens and eight-nines to seven-eight middle schools, they no longer offer the theater course in the middle schools, so that is now lying through on that one. Now we go down to the high schools. We added in science lab on that same line and increased that fee from $23 to $25. Science needed a little bit of additional money to help buy supplies for the experiments and those different types of things that they're doing in the science labs, so that's the rationale for that one. Down under the elective class fees, you have a couple question marks there. We had, we had a lengthy discussion with the principals about, are these fees meant to be per trimester, per course, per, you know, if, just depending on how long it lasts particularly? And we don't have a full decision on that, but when I was reading through this, I think most of it is pretty well self-explanatory, so I just left per trimester off, because we did not have that there before. But the first one down there in red is choir. It was $10 last year, and it's $15 being proposed. And part of that, there's two things that they're trying to do with choir. One is trying to have a few more funds for sheet music, and the, our arts coordinator, she's going to be talking to the stipend committee here at the end of the month. They're trying to come up and raise some funds in order to be able to pay an accompiness in a choir classroom in the middle school, and even considering that in the high school. Now, that won't totally address that, but that's a beginning point, and then we'll see what happens in the stipend committee meeting when that's discussed there. Driver's education, that's an increase of $35. This year, this fall, we had an audit from the state, and when the audit was completed, we do run a very good, I think, strong driver's ed program, but the state, against what our current driver's ed teachers are doing, the state says we need to drive the students one more hour, along with everything else that we're currently doing, and, because we were, we were counting more time on the range when kids were driving on the range, two seats, front passenger and a driver, counting more time of that towards their time, state wouldn't accept that. So right now, they're saying, we- So right now, they're saying we need to drive students one more hour. And now that puts an additional burden on our driver's ed teachers, our cars and everything. So the proposal is to increase everything by 35. 35 won't quite cover the cost. Most, just about every one of our driver's ed teachers are on the top pay level for our teach-after-school stipend rates. And so that will just about cover social security, taxes, retirement, everything that goes along with that. So that's why that proposal is there. And we're still trying to work with the state to see if we can come up with a different way on that one. Because our driver's ed teachers feel like our kids are well-prepared right now without adding an additional hour. But according to state law, we're not meeting that as we currently are at. The next one, Green Canyon High School Ice Skating. This is unique to Green Canyon simply because they're right next door to an ice skating rink, and they have a partnership set up or setting that up with the Eccles Ice Center. And they're going to be offering any student a class for an elective class to go over there for $50 for the class, and that provides them the skates and everything for ice skating. That's unique simply because they're right next to the rink. So that's what that is being asked for. Now, the next one, I don't want anyone to go into shock when you see some of these prices. But what I'm, and this is where we need a little feedback from the board, but we're trying to be as open and as transparent as possible when we're talking about what are the fees really costing the kids who are in these courses. Probably two of the most expensive programs in our high schools is cheer and drill. And I lined through one there where it was talking about underneath the uniform fee. I've taken totally out of that category and listed them below all by themselves. So cheer and drill, you can see what's listed there, $400, $800, okay? And I'm going to show you a couple of examples of that here in just a minute. But what that doesn't include, it doesn't include competition fees because travel to different locations vary and what the schools sign up for and participate in. But the principals tell me that the advisors do explain all this to parents in parent meetings, and so they're very much aware of what those costs are. But let me just show you a couple of examples, and I'll thank Terry Cutler. I asked her to give me an example of the cost for cheer and also for, well, the Capriels. But here's what it looks like right now at Mountain Crest. And Terry says this is very similar to what our other high schools look like. So just under required, it's saying $817. You can see optional, different things, that's another $900. So you're close to $1,800. Now, Terry and I talked a little bit earlier on the phone, and if you look up what's required, and you can go back and this discussion I had with Terry, years ago, cheerleaders, they had one uniform and that's what they used and they cheered. There's three different uniforms in that required. Now, is that a place we ought to really consider and say, shouldn't, if we want to cut back and make some of these fees a little bit more reasonable, should we consider things like that? Right now, parents are very willing to pay these fees and let their kids have the full experience and have three different uniforms and, you know, that's where I'd appreciate some feedback from the board. The next one I just want to show you is Capriels. The different program costs that the kids are dealing with with Capriels. Now, when you're looking at all these clothes and uniforms, they keep them. It isn't something that the school buys and the next year the other students use. No, they keep them. Now, down, if you're a cheerleader or a Capriel and you're on the team for two, three years, does that mean you don't have to keep buying the uniforms because they keep using the same uniforms? Well, if I, I'm probably telling you they want to change the uniforms every year just to be different. Okay, but maybe Terry can explain that. Do they change their drill and cheer uniforms every year, the different colors and everything? Or do they stick with them for four or five years? And if you're in the program a couple of years, once you've bought them, you have them. Terry, you want to say anything on that?
We have various variations in the year.
And, you know, but that's quite an expense to parents. But here again, they're excited to be part of that program, parents are very supportive. But look at the continuation of costs just on Capriels that they're involved with. And so part of the fee schedule that I put up there is I just wanted to be as possibly as clear as possible with the board, but there is no way I can set a total cost for this competition and what that school chooses to do. And that's why there's a window there of $400 to $800. Because when we sat together and we talked about it as principals, there are some principals that say, I don't want to charge, have kids be charged $800 to be in that program. Then they'll deliberately lead that program and have it be less. So we've kind of set a roof on it, a ceiling on it, on where that fee can be. So, any specific feedback from the board on any of that? Because it is an expensive program.
Does this limit some of the girls from not being able to participate in this?
Anything that we list on here is fee waiverable. Now, I don't know, I don't know how many kids have fee waivers that are in these types of programs.
They do a lot of fundraisers. Our understanding has been that you have to offer fundraising opportunities to offset those costs. So they do camps and they do, so a service camp, they can do as many service project fundraisers that they want. And they can do fundraisers. So, for example, cheer, in addition to their main camps and things like that, when they do their service fundraisers, they get a, do a setup to kind of offset those costs. And if a kid really gets out and gets paid in and really participates in those things, they can offset those costs exponentially. But they've got to get out and do those things. As far as, you know, how many kids do we have on fee waiver? This is my third year at a high school, and I have one. It's a concern though. Because if you do have a, let's take Capriels. Say I have a student on fee waiver.
Any concerns, questions? I'm kind of gasping at the cost.
Yeah. And, you know, I think it's important that we really put it out there and let people see what it costs. Because this is what they have been paying. I mean, this isn't new. This is what they have been paying. And we probably just haven't had in this document full disclosure on what it really is.
Well, I appreciate you combining those two instead of having them separate, combining them into one line. Because to me, that makes it more clear and more transparent that, okay, so it could cost anywhere from this to this. Do we need to say on there that it's school-specific or just leave it like that?
Well, you can, it's easy to put in there, you know. As, I was even thinking about, as approved by the school principal, that window between $400 and $800. Because there's some principals who have some pretty strong feelings on trying to hold some things down. And so an advisor just isn't free to go, no, I want to do $800. I think the principal should have some say and say, no, I'm capping you at six, or something like that, to run the program.
How do the principals feel about that? Do you want to have that? I mean, do you normally approve those or from the advisors? Or do the advisors come to you for approval?
Yes and no. You know, it might, it might be a little time at that high school. What I found is, what's difficult is you have this guideline, this group fees. But my thought was, what really would be what's on the paper? But, but, kind of the way around it has been, well, here's the required fee and here's optional fee. I mean, if I'm being totally honest with you and transparent, it's optional or optional, I don't know.
The peer pressure will make it.
Why?
Otherwise.
So how do you feel, I mean, do you want us to shut it down so that advisors have to live within a certain, or a maximum budget? Or would you rather us leave it open?
What if we took the numbers off? I think the range makes, you could do that. And I feel fine about, you know, if it's presented to the parents, which it has been. I would, I do want you to know that I think every school is really good about that. You have that required parent meeting, they're given that paper, it's spelled out crystal clear. There's no question about that. And I think that's always got to be a requirement. I think you have to let parents know what that cost is going to be, you know? I think as long as that's done, you can go that way or you can again have that range. But there are things that are not going to show up on here. I'll give you an example. I, you know, I gave Mike that thing on cheerleading. Let me tell you some fees that you're not going to see there. We went to a lot of state competition this year. Okay, and you go because you go to that next level, and guess what? We had to go to St. George. They had to get a hotel room. They had to pay for that. Do you see what I mean? I mean, there are just some costs that unless you have that parent meeting and you say things like, now, something that I want you to keep in mind is, if we go to state competition, there's a good chance it's in St. George, we're going to have some extra costs there, you know? But you're not going to see it show up.
Right.
So as long as parents know that, and I think there really hasn't been an issue with it. We were questioned a little bit this year just because what's the required fee? What's the optional fee? And what does the fee waiver actually cover? And we just haven't had that situation before. But I think just the recognition that it's, those two programs carry with them some extraordinary expenses.
My concern.
Sorry, where, so speaking of the fee waiver, where did you come up with that money from?
It ended up, the young lady did a lot of the fundraising, and I think she had like, I think she had like $600 in fundraising or more. And then the optional fees, you had those optional fees on there, and the rest, we just have to figure it out.
So my concern is, if you don't put some brakes on it now, is this something that's going to keep increasing and people keep getting more over the top with it as time goes on?
I think there's always that potential, yes.
So how many of the principals would like to have the boards set a limit?
I don't know that.
Do you know that, Mike?
I think if we set a range here and then give the principal the authority to work within that range, I think they'll be okay with that. But I think once the board sets a range, the school needs to comply and stay within that range.
I agree. Or why have the range?
But is that for required fees or required and optional? I mean, because Terry said that's how they're getting around the limits that are set.
Well, and the only way we're going to address that is we take what is listed on that sheet as optional and include it all in. Instead of that being a window of 400 to 800, it's going to be a window of 800 to 1,200. That's a little scary. But every one of those kids, I know it, are participating in every one of those optional items. Now, there's a couple of things there that, I mean, letterman's jacket, no. It's, that's, if you want it, you go get it. I don't think necessarily the peer pressure is there, but you start looking at those other things, yep, they're all going to be there.
How does this compare to other districts? I know Logan's district had a debate about this a couple of months ago.
I would have to get that information and be ready to give that to you at the next board meeting.
I'd like to see that.
Okay, I can get you that.
It used to be that the outfits were rented from year to year, and you just paid a rental fee. I mean, this was like 50 years ago, when I was a vistawn.
That was before, that was before they were shrink to fit.
And it was $25 a year.
Happy. That was before they were shrink to fit.
Oh, so that's not a possibility anymore.
Well, it's always a possibility, but I'll tell you, I don't think parents should be satisfied with that. And I think the parents are totally fine with paying these current listed fees that I've put up there because they feel like their girls are having a great opportunity.
The experience I've had is that, as a parent, is, I think the parents are the ones driving it up, is kind of what you're saying.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, yeah.
So someone has to be the gatekeeper, right?
Yeah, and maybe it's a big, it's nothing to make a big deal of right now because there's no pushback. Because there really is no pushback coming, it's just that I wanted to be open with the board that there is the real price of that program, and we shouldn't be saying $300 if it's really $1,500.
Yeah.
But there does have to be some prudence with this, right? I mean, it can't just be open-ended, I don't think. I feel that we send the wrong message if we do something like that. So I like the idea of establishing a range, and then people have to live within their budget, become creative.
So let me talk a little bit more with the secondary principals next week, and we'll come back at next time we're coming for approval, and we'll give you a little more feedback on that one.
Okay. I would be interested, like Roger asked, to know, you know, what it looks like in other districts, just to see.
I think Terry has a little bit of information on that, but.
Can I mention just one more thing? Something that you want, I mean, I want you to recognize is that some of the, that whole list of fees that you see. If I have a daughter who's in cheer, 10, 11, and 12, I'm not paying all those fees every year. Okay, I'm only going to get one letterman's jacket if I choose to do that. I can use the tights, you know, more than one year. And I don't know how much crossover there is, but maybe that's another thing that we try to encourage is that you get some longevity out of those purchases, you know? And if we've bought an orange, a blue, and a white, why would we have to buy them the next year? Why would we switch to something the next year? But I think, you know, maybe even look at going into a rotation, much like we do with our other uniforms. We try to be on a four-year rotation and, you know, with that rental, the uniform rental, because they get pretty hammered. The only issue I would see is, again, that changing of size. I mean, to, as a 10th grade girl, am I going to stay the exact same weight until I graduate from high school? And so I think issues like that come into play. But there are some things, they're not, it's a one-time purchase and a one-time cost. But we don't, I mean, it's hard to kind of see all those things.
As a principal, can you, could you enforce the rotation thing?
Yes, I think you could. However, what we do with the regular uniform rotation is you have a variety of size. a variety of sizes, do you know what I'm saying? And so you have kind of a wardrobe to choose from. So if you were going to do that, I think you'd have to, you know, you'd have to consider that and just see what the needs are. But I, you know, the school might be in a position where they would have to buy like different sizes, knowing that, that there's going to be some, some change. Unless you were going to say, you know, if you change sizes, I mean, you're going to have that, you're going to incur that cost again.
Well.
Like if you want something different from.
Maybe I'm not explaining myself. I mean, could you encourage that, that the girls who come on as sophom- as sophomore, I don't know, do they come on the, on the squad as sophomores? That, that those are the uniforms, that, that they use the same uniforms all the way through? Not that the school's going to buy them and store uniforms like band uniforms and football and stuff like that, but that the girls still buy their own uniforms.
Right.
But they're using the exact same uniform for three years.
No, I understand that. And, and, yeah, I, I think you could do that. I think, I, it's not my area of expertise, you know what I mean? But I, but I think so. Again, knowing that if you're, if, if you have to get a different size, you're going to incur that cost.
Right.
Or we have, you know, that you're, that you're clear about that.
Right.
Because I think that's some of the reason for the changing as well, you know? But I, I, what, I told Mike this today, I, I think, if you guys have more questions, I think it would be advantageous for you to have some of the advisors and coaches come in and kind of explain.
That's a great idea.
Where they're coming from, you know, because I, I've sat down and, and honestly, they'll tell me things, oh, I didn't think about that, oh, I didn't know that. You know, now I, I mean, I understand your rationale for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, and Mike, didn't you say that we, there, you haven't had much pushback from parents?
No, I, I haven't and I, I don't think, the principals just say they've had much pushback. I think it's just a matter of being upfront.
Okay, thanks for the information.
Well, maybe we could go ahead sometime and get some of the advisors in to give us the other side of the story.
And I think one of the things that, that's driving this is, is the competitions.
Sure.
And, and so if you, if we were to do anything that was perceived that we were placing them in a situation where they weren't going to be competitive at the next event, you will have parents here that you will be discussing this with, rather than just school people. And I can just, from years of experience, I'm just telling you that, so.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, I'll bring that, that other information back next month then.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, let's see. Here, where are we? Okay, we will move on to the board reports and I just asked everyone if they would share one thing concerning the USBA conference that they would like us to look a little more into, or they thought was good information. Randall, we'll start with you.
Okay, I, yeah, I thought there was a lot of good workshops. One that I thought was interesting was talked about a kind of a case study of a North San Pete, a school district. I actually had three people present. One was the superintendent. One was a person who worked with an energy consulting company called Siemens, and the other one was a lady who worked in the governor's office on energy, and all three of them talked about their situation. They had some outdated equipment, boilers that were really old, they could no longer get parts for, it was very expensive for them to maintain. They had pneumatic air controls and airflow devices that were not operating efficiently. And there's a program set up where the company will come in and give a free assessment. They'll go in and look at a building and see how they can make it more efficient, if it does need to be efficient. And there's grants and resources set up where they can go ahead and make these changes. They were able to make quite a few changes and through grants, it was kind of amazing that they had six million dollars worth of upgrades and the, and they only had to pay a total of two million dollars to do that. They were able to get a bond to make these improvements. It was passed through the school board, but I thought it was just interesting that programs like this are available and, you know, I don't know if we have a need in our district with buildings, but I thought that was real interesting that they were able to accomplish all of this.
Thank you. Roger?
I went to some real good ones, but one I really liked was Weber School District. They have got a program with Weber State where they are training or teaching their students in ninth grade on up to be teachers, so that they can teach their own teachers, you know? I know years ago, I had a high school student that come into my sixth grade class for a couple hours during the day. And then that was their experience from high school. But I think it's a great idea if we can train our own people to be teachers because it's going to be to the point where we need teachers. And if we can get something going with Utah State where we can include some of those classes in high school. They had three or four students that they had, and they are all four going to graduate from high school with their associates, ready to go in to education at Weber State. I think it's just a good idea if we could do it, I don't know. Where we have Utah State so close, I know we get a lot of help from interns and stuff, but.
We've been, we've been working on that. I think we've actually got a teacher prep program class going in, in one of the high schools.
Skyview.
It's Skyview.
But it'd be nice if we could encourage kids to be teachers. You know, we listened to these kids tonight and only one said they wanted to be a teacher, so.
Good point. Okay, Jeff?
So I like the one that Randall went to also, but I went to the school finance one that Rob Smith did. And for me, that was, he, whatever reason, he spoke my language and I was able to understand a lot of what he was talking about, but anyway, some great information there.
Thank you. Terry?
Yeah, I would encourage anytime he's presenting, Rob Smith.
He does a good job.
It's worth going to.
He was good.
First of all, I just want to thank you all for your support and your help last weekend. That put us all a little bit out of our comfort zones. But I also want to ask for feedback for if I do this again, what can I do different?
Do you think our little skit was too foo-foo?
You know, I heard the word classy to describe that from several people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I didn't hear anything other than they thought it was great support and participation from all of the board members. I, the public doesn't always make the right decision.
Well, and some people said, I mean, you've got two great people running, so.
Yeah, that's true too.
I thought it was a good.
Larger area too.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
I thought it was a good idea that he had the flyer on the table, and that would be my suggestion for another time, is that we do get something on.
Exposure?
Yeah, do get something on the table. And, I mean, he just really talked himself up so much, which kind of irritated me, but I think on a flyer, you could do it some way so it didn't seem so self-centered, egotistical. But here are my qualifications, and so that would be my only suggestion.
Okay.
I imagine it was probably pretty close, but I think, I mean, I don't know, but.
Oh, I do.
Oh, you know?
The superintendent's happy to count.
Oh, okay.
It was clo- it was close. And there were forty people who didn't vote, so that could have very easily flipped it the other way really quick. But you can't count on everybody voting. I, I think it's really, you know, I think if, if, though, if the presentations would have been in different order, if you'd have gone first, I think that might have made a difference too, I don't know. But he, he, he is, he has some presentation skills that I, that if you didn't know or hadn't been, and that's why the whole process is, I've been thinking about it, I would like him to be, to be more serious about it and give more time and, and a little more substance to, to people to really get to know you. And if that, if that means not giving the presenter who's running more time, because that sometimes is really hard for people to talk about themselves and things. But let two or three people talk about for more minutes about what's been accomplished by working with this individual. I think you could start to ferret out whether somebody's a real serious get things done type person, or whether they have great presentation skills. That's all I'm saying, so.
Okay. All right, points taken. My favorite, well, I had several favorites. I really liked the Grow Your Own Teachers class that Roger spoke about. I also really appreciated the, the Provo School Superintendent, School District Superintendent and one of the assistant superintendents taught a class about bringing district office departments together for PLCs. Because the perception of teachers is that, and other people, is that people in the district office don't collaborate. And so they have made a very strategic, specific effort to have PLCs and collaboration across departments within the district office. And, and not siloing the different focuses of, of everyone. But that everyone is on the same page so that when one district person says something about, well, this could happen, then another district office person knows the same thing and gives the same information. So that was, that was, I really appreciated that.
We should have made that presentation ten years ago, because that's essentially what our, our literacy program's all about.
Well, I know they do it in literacy, but they were talking about across different.
And, but I think that's the culture in here, and I think we could have, we, I'm, I didn't go to it, but I'm just saying we could have made a presentation that would have shown them the results of what happens when you do that. And, and I didn't have a chance to go to that one, so I, but I'm just saying, that's, that's how, that's the model that got this district where it is in deference to what happens on the curriculum side. Now, we don't, we don't have a lot of that with the business office type of things, and maybe we could improve in those areas. Because we don't do a lot of collaboration there, but, but on the side where it's instruction, I think we've done a nice job with that.
We just started a principal PLC, so all the principals are starting to work together on some literacy.
Steve, do you have anything you want to?
Well, I went to the legislative one and that gave me the most hope I've had in a long, long time. Brad Last is now a co-chairman of the joint appropriations, so that's somebody from the House side now that really is a former school board member. And he's in favor of equalization and, and then when I found out that the speaker's not going to run again, that gave me a, a lot more hope. Because he would, I know Brad would never go against the speaker, and the speaker killed the equalization bill last year by not letting it come to a floor vote. The votes were there, he didn't let it come. But he, but when asked specifically if Brad thought if this year we could get it through, yeah, he did. And so I thought the two sessions with the two legislators were some of the best I've attended in all the years. And Lowry Snow did make, is making an attempt to clear up and, and rectify the things in the juvenile justice, but I talked to Sharie today and she doesn't think he's gone far enough. So I said, give him, give me the things, he's willing to listen. But those were really, really good sessions and, but gave me a lot of hope.
You know, in our community council meeting at Ridgeline, Principal Hankey said that he's been communicating with him also.
Representative Snows?
Yeah, yeah.
And Sharie has collected some data from all of the high schools. She probably.
She was talking to Mike about that today.
She's been sending emails all day long about that.
Okay. Yeah, so that will be good. Okay, so the one that I went to that was really a lot of fun was Robert Rules of Order. And we kind of have a casual version of Robert's Rules of Order here, which Steve and I talked about, it's working. And so we're not going to make big changes about it, but I thought I would tell you a couple of things that I learned from it. First of all, we don't have to vote on adjourning the meeting. Once the agenda is done, all I have to say is meeting is adjourned and we are done. And if the crowd gets rowdy, I can say, meeting adjourned and we are done. So I thought that was kind of a interesting little thing.
That's a nice one to keep in your tool bag.
The second one, which I'm pretty guilty of, is no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. So I tried this tonight to not keep speaking so much and see if anybody else had anything to say. So I'll kind of work on that too. And then this one, if any of you ever notice that we are breaking our board rules, which will be in our board handbook, all you have to say is point of order. And then I will say my little thing, which is, what do I say? State your point, and then you say what it is, and then I make a decision if it's okay or not. But you can still counteract that if I say, if I'm being really snotty to someone and you say, point of order, and I say, oh, well, we're not going to do that, you can make it a, I can't remember what it's called, but I'll find out.
What should we say after that?
Yeah, I'll find out, let you know on that one. But I thought, okay, that was kind of fun. Oh, whoops, I just lost my notes. Hang on here. Trying to hurry. But these were really fun. The lady who does this is really, really a lot of fun. If you ever get a chance to go to her workshop, you should. And then, and that's pretty much it, the main thing.
One thing that she helped me with, that was a good workshop, is a lot of people, I always wondered what to say. I make a motion that, but she says, all you need to simply say is I moved that. So that was something that I learned from that that was real beneficial. Because I used to, I hear people say, I make a motion that we do this, or, but she says, just simply say, I moved that, so.
And then the one thing I learned for me too is after it's been moved and seconded, I just need to restate. We have now moved and seconded that we will have property to sell, blah, 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 whatever it is, is there any discussion? So it, it was really kind of fun. Okay, anybody have anything else to say on that?
Just, just one thing. Alan called and asked how the board felt about doing the superintendent and VA evaluations this year. And if we wanted to do that, then we would get ahold of Richard.
Richard.
Yeah. And so he wanted me to just throw that out there tonight if you want to think about it.
Let's talk about that at the next one. And I know the superintendent survey has eighty questions and the business administrator one is seventy-one questions, which maybe we should kind of slim those down.
Do the quiz notes version?
Yeah, on it. But yeah, think about it, and I'll put that on the agenda for next time to talk about it, since we're running kind of long tonight. Okay, then on the president's report for tonight, I, did everybody get a chance to read the little section on the board hearing? This is from our handbook, which we should have finished up by next month. I'm hoping I got to talk to Carolyn and see if she'll put the last little finishing touches on it. But let me just kind of read through this really quickly till, till we get to this one part. The Cache County Board of Education conducts board hearings. For many of these hearings, such as student expulsion hearings, school accommodation hearings, and teacher termination hearings, the board serves as an impartial hearing board. In these instances, board members who serve on the panel must make their decision based only on the evidence and information presented at the meeting, or at the hearing. And that was the reason why the district did not inform us about what was going on with the teacher. And so, just so we know, we cannot always hear the details if there's going to be a hearing, because we have to be impartial about it as we listen. Any questions or?
The district did a great job, by the way, on that whole incident.
I agree.
Very impressed.
Yeah, I agree. Good job, Tim. Good job. Good job, Steve. That turned out so much better than I thought it was going to.
You're not just kidding.
Yeah, I'm glad you settled that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and have the superintendent's report.
I just wanna thank you all again for the leadership you provide, for the fact that we don't have to use Robert's Rules of Order just to keep everybody civil. And your leadership and in fact, you'd give up your time to go down there. I know there are lots of things you can do with the weekend and just thanks for going down. And thanks for, for running for leadership. And you wanna just check and see if they need something? They've been using that other room, so that's all.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for the flowers, Kathy.
That was from Steve.